The bigger you are, the harder you fall. And they're like, I don't get it. So like, but yeah, you never fall. I'm like.
So I'm gonna call the city council meeting for the city of Lake Elmo Tuesday, January 7th. The order. Please stand with me for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the second order of business is to approve the agenda. If there's no changes that would people would like, um, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, agenda is hereby approved. So I guess we'll do presentations, which is a swearing in of, uh, the newly elected members, which include, uh, four of the five of us. Well, Nick and then the three of us re-elected. So I don't know how you wanted to do this, Nicole.
Um, our city clerk Julie is gonna administer the oath for our newest council member, Councilmember Cragness.
Councilmember, would you please stand and raise your right hand?
Yeah.
Repeat after me. I, Nick Cragness, do solemnly swear.
I, Nick Cragness, do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States. To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully.
And to discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office of council member.
The duties of the office of council member.
Of the city of Lake Elmo, Minnesota.
The city of Lake Elmo, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alright. And presentations, we also have introduction of Ty Jacobson, our Washington County Sheriff's Sergeant. Can you come introduce yourself, replacing, I think, uh, Sergeant Erickson?
Uh, Mayor and council members, this is Sergeant Ty Jacobson. Um, Sergeant Jacobson has been with the Washington County Sheriff since 2004. Um, and he has assumed his new role as, uh, Sergeant, um, assigned to Lake Elmo just in the beginning of the year. And then I was gonna turn over to Ty to introduce himself some more.
Yeah, uh, like Administrator Miller said, um, Sergeant Jacobson with the Washington County Sheriff's Office. I've been there for roughly 20 years. Um, I have a bachelor's degree from Corder University in Criminal Justice. I've held several, uh, roles in the sheriff's office to name a few. Uh, I started as a patrol deputy, had, um, uh, been part of our water parks and trails division, our water recovery team, our K-9 unit, our SWAT team, mobile field force, uh, community engagement, um, a few other, other small ones as well. But, um, I'm excited to be out here and, uh, be a part of, uh, the Lake Elmo team and, uh, be, uh, serve in the community of Lake Elmo full-time. A resident of the community, I live in the area. I also have family members that own businesses in Lake Elmo, so, um, I wanna thank Sheriff Starry for giving me the opportunity to come out here and, and serve the community full-time.
Welcome. Thank you for helping us out. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone for public comments or inquiries? No? Alright. Then I will, uh, we, we did receive the, uh, minutes from the regular and special meeting in our packets from, uh, December 17th. I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve the minutes from that meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes from December 17th, 2024, regular and special meeting.
Second. Alright. All those in favor of approving the minutes from December 17th, 2024, regular and special meetings, please signify by saying aye.
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 Alright, minutes have been approved. Well, we start off a dandy with the consent agenda and I'll save, who usually volunteers, uh, council member Holtz, I'll, I'll take care of it. We'll, we'll save your wonderful voice.
Appreciate that.
Number two is approve payment of disbursements and payroll. Number three is designate official depositories of Funds Resolution 2025, 2025 dash 001. Number four, designate official publication newspaper of record Resolution 2025 dash 002. Number five, adopt resolution, resolution designating data practice officials and approving city's data practice policy Resolution 2025 dash 003. Number six, designate authority of EFT payments Resolution 2025 dash 004. Number seven, approve security reduction for legacy at North Star Second Edition. Number eight is approve security reduction of launch Crossroads Development. Number nine, approve pay request number one for well-to PFOs removal equipment. Number 10, approve pay request number three for the Hudson Boulevard Improvement Segment A. Number 11, approve payment request number two, final for the 15th Street North Improvements. Number 12, approve pay request number six, final for the 2024 Street and Utility Improvements. Number 13, approve replacement of backhoe. Number 14, approve replacement of V plow. Number 15, approve replacement of tool cat and broom. Number 16, approve CIP Project F dash 021 Equipment Decon Cleaning System Purchase. Number 17, approve CIP Project F dash 004 Rescue One Hole Storage and Equipment Refurbish. Number 18, approve CIP Project F dash 031 Station Alerting System Purchase. Number 19, appoint city attorney, both civil and prosecution. Number 20, appoint deputy clerk. Number 21, approve NCJA JPA between Minnesota BCA and the city of Lake Elmo. Number 22, approve Prairie Sky's Final Plaid Extension Resolution 2025 dash 006. I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Moving on to the regular agenda, number, item number 23 is appoint the 2025 Acting Mayor.
I'll move to appoint Councilmember Holtz as Acting Mayor for 2025 to comply with and fulfill all duties enumerated in Minnesota Statute 412 dot 121 relating to selection of an acting mayor.
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of, uh, appointing Councilmember Holtz as 2025 Acting Mayor, please signify by saying aye.
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 That's approved. Number 24, Ramsey Washington Cable Commission Appointment Resolution 2025 dash 005. I think this is to appoint somebody that's on council to the cable commission. And I think for the past, is it two years?
Yeah.
It's been yourself?
And I'm, I'm, I'm fine with continuing if that's, uh, what you guys would like as well. I know I can't make this week's meeting, but, um.
Ooh.
Otherwise, I know, that might be the deal breaker, but.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, um, uh, Councilmember Hearn to the 2025, uh, to Ramsey County Ramsey Washington Cable Commission.
Support.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of appointing Councilmember Hearn to Ramsey Washington Cable Commission, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright. Um, number 25 is, item number 25 is appointing the council school liaison.
And I am fine having it be someone else. Either, would either the Knicks be interested?
I would, uh.
Or the mayor.
I would take that on. I haven't done that before.
I would move to appoint the mayor.
Second.
Alright. Motion to appoint, uh, Mayor Cadenhead as the school liaison. Any discussion? Call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright. Approved. The Lake Elmo Airport Advisory Commission. Um, I know Councilmember Holtz has been that, this on the past. Is that something you wish to continue or you wish to let somebody else?
I would hear if, uh, our newest council member has any interest in being a part of it. Do you, do you, or do you wanna know more information about it? I don't wanna, um, you know, have multiple things, but I also wanna make sure you have an opportunity to be involved in some of these. So do you have an interest?
Yeah, I do have interest. I would love to get more information on it.
Alright, is that something we wanna table until that discussion has happened?
Uh, the airport has asked to get the names quickly, I believe the fir-, but the first meeting is not till March, correct? So I think we have to.
We have time. Alright.
And I, I will say moving forward, I think, uh, another discussion point could be, cause we have two, a primary and a backup as to, if we wanna maintain that, um, having our administrator be a primary versus a council member, um, there might be room for that discussion as to if that's the best usage of our administrator's time.
Okay.
Yes, I will gladly sit down and have a chat with you, sir, if you wanna know more and we can discuss with our administrator as well.
Great.
Yeah, so I'm gonna make a motion to table the Lake Elmo Airport Advisory Commission to the next council meeting.
Support.
All those in favor of tabling item number 26 until the next council meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So move. So done, done, yeah. Uh, number 27, appoint city engineer and approve amendment to Bolton and Mink Professional Services Agreement. Jack, did you wanna? Well, this is, um, Nicole, did you wanna discuss this to see if there's any questions prior to any motions?
Yeah, yeah, Mayor and Council. Um, so our engineer, Focus engineer, who has been serving the city since 2011, was recently acquired by Bolton and Mink effective the beginning of this year. So, um, a couple of steps have taken place since that, um, to ensure that we, um, continue to have a city engineer, um, in place. So, um, from January 1st to January 7th, there was a task order assigned, so we have not been without an engineer. Um, and then also Bolton and Mink did submit, uh, proposal to continue to be, or now to be the city's primary engineer. And so that is, um, what's in front of you tonight to discuss. And we have Jack, um, with Focus here. We also have Nate Stanley, um, with Bolton and Mink, who is here also. So, um, they are probably the best to answer any questions going forward.
And it's for engineering services for the year of 2025?
That is correct. And also, I would say, um, I look at this as just another step in the, the process. So, um, this, uh, agreement does not have an expiration date. It would be amending the professional services agreement that we do have with Bolton and Mink already. Uh, it's just amending it to provide engineering services. But I would, um, like to hear from the council too, if they do have a wish to, uh, go out for RFP, for permanent placement, that is an option you do have going forward as well.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Do we need to do an RFP for it?
No, you do not.
Okay. I did have a question. Um, so this would probably be, yeah, for Bolton and Mink. So in the, uh, in the, the memo that was written to us says, in addition, Bolton and Mink acknowledges the city's intent to continue to utilize professional services pool for project engineering services, services when deemed in the bench, best interests of the city. I guess I was just hoping to get a little clarity on what exactly that means. Is that, um, that the council's brought into that decision and we vote on if it's something we wanna bring to, uh, have the, uh, pooled, um, professional services? Or is that a decision that's made by Bolton and Mink? And if so, maybe what are those criteria that you guys decide that upon?
Uh, I'll be happy to take that. Um, having served the city, so that the Focus model was to provide the in-house sort of model and have a consulting pool that we would look at different consultants for different services. So we do have SEH as your water system engineer. We have Bolton and Mink as your forest main sewer lift, lift station engineer. They've been doing the bread and butter street projects. We have KLJ working on some projects, things like that. So that, it's just a simple statement saying there's an intent to continue that process, that those consultants have been selected primarily by the engineering department, but also with staff input as it, as it, as it's come up. Um, we've usually, uh, solicit a couple of RFPs after, after, uh, um, you know, Focus would do the feasibility reports, do the, the planning of the projects, things like that. And then we'd get to a point and we would, um, prepare an RFP and we would solicit RFPs for that, the bigger portion of the project. So, um, the statement is indicating, um, you know, Bolton and Mink and most other, most firms unlike Focus Engineering provide a sole source and they're looking to do all the work. And so we're indicating that, that, um, we would continue this, this model. But it would mostly be, um, you know, working with your in-house staff and, and team as to what projects we would look for.
And would the council have some input on, you know, this is a project based off previous projects where we've had a good outcome with a, an engineering service for a certain project?
Yeah, absolutely, cause every project, every, every specific project is ultimately authorized by the council at, at the time of authorization. So every specific project does come to, come before council, so yes.
That's where we could have a little discretion, is the, hey, this is something we would like brought to have.
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions for either Jack or the administrator? Or Mr. Stanley is, is in the audience tonight? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to appoint Mr. Nate Stanley of Bolton and Mink, Inc. as the official city engineer and principal provider of professional engineering services for 2025. And to approve the amendment to the Bolton and Mink Professional Services Agreement dated March 20, 2013.
Second. Alright, discussion? Councilmember Dragicic?
A couple of discussion points. One is, um, our current contract with Focus required a 30-day notice by either party to terminate the agreement. We got that notice Sunday. So I think first thing we need to do is agree with, um, Focus Engineering, with Jack, that we will terminate the agreement immediately, so you don't have an agreement with Focus and agreement with Bolton and Mink for the same services.
I think that's fine, but correct me if I'm wrong, there's no longer a Focus Engineering.
Correct. I mean, it was an asset sale, so technically there is a Focus Engineering. But Focus Engineering has no employees, so there's nobody who can provide services through Focus.
So it'd be okay to terminate?
Yep.
In less than 30 days?
If Jack's agreeable to it.
And we did provide, you know, verbal notice. It was all provided in November. Um, we've been, um, working diligently with, um, the city to find, to bring, to bring, to bridge this transitional services through these different task orders and amendments so that you're without, so that you have this continuity of service throughout.
Should we have another motion per legally?
We'd have another motion to, Emily, just agree to terminate the contract, current contract with Focus as of today. And that way we don't have any conflicts that we'd be stepping over. And I agree, Jack has kept us informed, it's just, it's a technicality more than anything, but I think it just makes the cleaner and, and.
Yeah.
Avoids any confusion.
Seems fine to me. I think we can make. Do you, so do you want to maybe amend, have a friendly amendment to this motion?
What would be the proper procedure, Sarah?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I, I think if, you know, if you wanna just amend the motion to include termination of the Focus contract, you can certainly do that, or if you just wanna do it by separate motion after you approve the amendment to the Bolton and Mink contract, you can do that too.
Councilmember Dragicic, how would you like to, uh?
Either ways, file, let's, um, let's amend the current motion, keep them together. So I'd offer an amendment that we would terminate the contract with Focus, our current contract with Focus Engineering effective today.
Are you okay with that friendly amendment?
Yep.
Councilmember Holtz? Uh, take a, if you can, take a vote on the friendly amendment. All those in favor of the amendment to the original motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So a friendly amendment is attached.
I had one other comment.
Yes, sir.
Some of the services we currently get from Focus are at a much lesser price than what were being proposed by Bolton and Mink. Um, and we don't have a fiscal impact analysis of that, but, um, I'm wondering if there's any opportunity to negotiate some more favorable fees on that, at least, or maybe a transition of fees for a period of time, um, since we don't have it in the budget.
So, I do have a question. I know that, um, previously, uh, Bolton and Mink had presented back in November of '23 with some costs. In this, uh, letter sent by you at the beginning of January, Mr. Stanley, it noted some engineering team rates per hour, uh, if you wanna come to the podium. And, um, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there's typically some, uh, rates that are within the retainer schedule and rates that are beyond the retainer schedule that are more normal. Are these the rates that you had intended in the retainer schedule? Or are they, you're the normal rates outside of what the retainer comp, uh, has?
Uh, Mayor and Council, uh, yes, those rates would be for, you know, beyond the retainer schedule. The retainer is proposed to remain, uh, at the $3,200.
Yeah.
A monthly fee, which covers, uh, pretty much any day-to-day task, uh, for the engineering department.
So I know that in the 23 schedule of costs at that time, so we're talking, it'd have been two years and with normal increases of 3%, 4% or whatever it is that, that engineering firms will increase on a yearly basis. I think the maxed-out principle at that level was at, uh, maybe like $200 an hour. So, can't do the math in my head, cause math is hard, but. So that would be like 212, it's like $12 an hour or more. I don't know, it's kind of a swag.
Well, my concern is that some of these services that, that Jack provided, or Focus provided at $150 an hour will now cost us $225 an hour. And sources that he provided $130 an hour, now it'll be $180 an hour. And, um, we don't know, we don't have any estimate of what that fiscal impact is yet, um, on the, on our budget, but it, um, it's a fairly, you know, fairly steep increase.
It is, it is a larger increase.
If I, if I may, um, we, we've been very focused on that through the, through the negotiations as well. Um, I did go back and look at the 2023 proposal that Bolton and Mink provided, the $2,200 retainer. And then I analyzed it a little bit more and it was less scoped than what Focus had been providing for the $3,100 retainer, which is why I brought that one forward, because I thought that was the better deal. So that, that's your, it, you, you have no impact because it's the same fee as Focus for your general services. So your general services budget has, will have no impact. It also is much more robust services, in particular the GIS services. So included, um, Focus provided mapping and GIS coordination. What we did is we handled the CAD mapping, did mapping updates in CAD, and then we had to coordinate with GIS professionals elsewhere that you paid for separately, um, and get your stuff transferred into Beehive and get your stuff transferred into other kinds of maps. What, with that same language under Bolton and Mink and with them having that staff, that's all included. Um, they provided you a, a, a proposal in 2023 that they were going to provide you a one-time setup of all your GIS and system maps for, uh, value of about 40,000. So that's included in this proposal. You'll, you'll be getting that, um, for this year. The difference in the 2023 proposal was, it was the one-time setup and then after that you would pay for that service. In this one, it's in your general retainer, so if we keep the retainer going in subsequent years and things like that, then that's, that's included, the, the annual updates with the GIS and the mapping, the system apps. So to me, I thought it was a little bit more robust package that's in the, that's in that retainer.
And we, we had something that I don't think you just touched on was the inclusivity of, um, the state aid.
State aid was, state aid was another one that was outside, that, that wasn't reflected in the, the 2023 proposal by BMI.
Right.
That, that we do as well, yeah.
So I did ask Jack for a little clarification previously and he, he did give me a little write-up of, you know, Bolton and Mink's old versus new and just kind of indicating that, you know, what was not included in the 23 BMI that is included now had a cost of approximately $19,000, which makes it, actually, uh, this deal a little bit less overall than had we gone with BMI in 23.
But it, it's irrelevant what BMI proposed in 23, cause they weren't retained.
No, but I'm just looking at, it's not that, but what, the only difference is the cost in the rates beyond what's in the retainage.
Right, but what's not, what's, what's, what's in those rates would be the 225 rates are, provide assistance to other city departments on engineering-related matters, act as the city's liaison and tech and represent to other communities, the county watershed, state, federal agencies, assist public works with managed rate to performance operations permitting of water, sewer and stormwater, including N, MS4, NPDES. That's all gonna be done at the 225 or $180 rate per hour.
I, I thought those were with the, the cost monthly within the retainage.
Nope, nope, those are not within the retainage.
The, the retainer, the retainer follows your budget. So you have your budget set up and you have a, you go through and there's a general services budget. That's all the retainer stuff that's in there. Um, the, the enterprise funds, we've, have never been in the Focus retainer. So when we, we work on something, um, an example, Marty has a water main breakout here on County Road 14, we might have some hours into investigating the history of that, things like that, that just gets billed to your water fund. If a pro, if, if we decide we need to do something about that and build a project, then we build a project and we come with a task order to do a project and then those fees are negotiated or, you know, set up as what the project cost is at that point. But those have, yeah, those were never, under the Focus model, those were never under the, the retainer as well.
Okay. So, then what are you looking to do, Councilmember Dragicic?
Well, I think, as I read the Focus model, those were within the retainer. The, well. I think, you know, because how do we control those costs? Who proves that we would have those services added?
So that also means at that time, when those additional services were being done, it was at a rate that's drastically less than what this would be?
Yes.
Is that fair?
That's fair. I, I mean, Focus has gone away and there's no other Focus that I'm aware of.
One, one thing I will offer, uh, to the council is that while my rate is, uh, much higher in this, this proposal as $225 an hour, as Councilmember Dragicic has pointed out, um, for a lot of these tasks that are beyond retainer, um, the staff that will be working on these would be significantly less than what my bill rate is. Um, I would provide some direction and oversight, serve as a point of communication. I'm thinking, for example, the MS4 work that was brought up. Um, our environmental technicians at Bolton and Mink are anywhere between $130 and $150 an hour generally. Uh, that's pretty darn close to, um, what those Focus rates were. And for a task like that, they would be doing the lion's share of the work. Yes, I would have some time, but, um, as far as, um, you know, the hours that are really gonna stack up, it's not going to be my high rate. And I work in a number of communities that have, um, you know, much like Lake Elmo and much like everybody, uh, you know, concerns over their finances and, and budgeting. I'm very cognizant of what my bill rate is and how I spend my time. And, um, it's, it's, um, part of my job is to make sure that, um, you know, we're being a steward for our clients and not just running up the bills. And that's something I'm very committed to, um, as a professional.
So follow a question. When those costs do incur.
So follow a question. When those costs do incur, Marty has a water main break and engineering needs to go out. Obviously, engineering needs to go out, right? Like, that's a must-have, but obviously, there's no approval from us. We're getting the, we're getting the, the bill after the fact. Are there other, I'm trying to think of situations where, because we don't want to be involved in, no, don't go fix that water main break, like, but I'm trying to think, like, when, when, are there examples that come to mind where you could, where your, your ability to manage those costs does come into play to say, no, I could do this, but I am going to make sure that it's, it's someone else where it's also within their wheelhouse? So you said with the MS four stuff, obviously it falls to you, but what's something where it actually could be either, but you're making sure that you're delivering it to the, the more affordable option?
Right.
It's not the right word.
No, absolutely, absolutely, Mayor and Council. The, something like what we're talking about, the water main break, that's an emergency. We can't, you know. We just had one out here the other day, right? And we have to react to those. And typically on the engineering end, it's not going to be a ton of time on our part. Maybe help, it'd be assisting public works with some records typically, you know, whether it's as-built or, you know, if they have questions on, you know, if they're looking for a valve, if we can help find the valve, you know. But it's a very minimal amount of time that I see in a situation like that. You know what I mean? I, you know, I use the MS four example as something because that's more of a project-oriented task that does take, you know, weeks and months of time. So, right, does that help?
And there are line item, so those enterprise funds, there is an engineering, engineering services line item for each of those enterprise funds. And we've, since two thousand and eleven, I think we've stayed within those and, and managed to those. So we do look at those budgets. We aren't always invited to be as party to those fees as we can be. So, for instance, a lot of times the stormwater one will just roll over. Someone will look at what it was last year and just think that's good enough for next year. And what we try to be cognizant of is, you know, when, a few years ago, we ran into MS four total rewrite by the NPCA. Well, that was a big project, and we didn't budget for it because we weren't really invited into that budget. But, so sometimes you can see that stuff coming when regulatory-wise, you're going to be forced to do something a little more robust.
Is, are those the types of things then you would incorporate into a future CIP, Jack, I imagine?
Well, well, this is like writing a permit, so it's not a capital, but, but we do try to be cognizant of making sure, oh, that's coming up in twenty-twenty-five. You should have a higher budget for that year for that line item.
Right.
Because we know we're going to have more work, like the lead and copper rule thing came out that now fortunately, we, we got a grant for that through the Department of Health. But every now and then, those kinds of things pop up that, that come forward. And if we see that coming, we want to be able to get that in those line items of those enterprise funds.
Sure. Councilmember Holtz?
So like as an example, I don't know with priority one, is the subgroup, water group, sub, the subgroup, is that still operating? Are they still meeting at all?
There are meetings now and then because they're doing those, they're doing the plan updates. And then there's some changes that were going on here and there. But, so I do attend those meetings. We are billing that against the administration grant that Clark had obtained, so.
You read my mind.
Yeah.
And I guess then, what do the two of you see then as that, that transition point? Obviously, like, how do you want some of that, that experience that you have gained through that entire world? How do you see that transferring out so it, so we're still in a good position?
Yeah, I, the, the idea is to, for it to be slow, I'll be around and in the background for a long time. I hope to be here for your comp plan updates when you have to do your system plans because that's when the institutional knowledge of your bigger infrastructure systems is really important. So I can be here to be engaged in that. So again, I'll have, like Nate was saying, I'll have a lot more resources of people doing the day-to-day grind and that, but I'll be there to be able to lead those and, and provide that input and bring that, that knowledge of your systems forward. So I think in the first couple of months, you'll see Nate and I at a lot of meetings. You're not getting billed for that. First and foremost, all those meetings are in your general retainer, so we're not. But if we're going to a project meeting, only one of us is billing to the project in, in the transitional phase.
Thank you. Well, I guess from the discussion standpoint, I guess, Councilmember Dragasich, I understand that there's a, an hourly fee increase and as I tried to do with topics as a general and, and what, what, and this, and, you know, I was able to talk with Jack after my vote back in twenty-twenty-three. I was in favor of Bolton and Mink in twenty-twenty-three, and it's not just, I don't look at it as an hourly rate for the city engineer and some of those that have increased, but I look at the overall benefit, the city sees, the amount of services that a full-service program brings. And sometimes those fees do come with, let's just make it, I mean, Mr. Stanley doesn't make two hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. So that's the overhead that takes for the offices. We won't have, you know, an office, or Focus won't have, they're an office in Oakdale. We've got, if we need to get a surveyor, it's much quicker. You don't have to do the administrative process to hire a surveyor to come out. They do have a lot of, you know, EITs that work through the project engineer that move up through that, that, you know, we were going to get those fees, whether Focus hired S E H or S R F or whoever, right? So when I look at the overall package of what we're getting versus direct fee for a few, a couple of the key people, I guess I don't, I don't have the same level of concern.
My, like, my concern is, you, like, I don't want to provide assistance to other city departments. That was in Focus's retainer fee. That was the first, it was included within the retainer fee. In this case, we're going to be paying two hundred bucks an hour, two hundred and twenty-five bucks an hour for that. And again, how do you, how do you manage that if you're acting as a city engineer? Providing support services to other city departments seems to be an inherent function of being the city engineer.
Right.
I, I guess I, I, I wrote the language in twenty-eleven, and I wrote the language this time around, and I, there's no intention for any difference in the language. The retainer fee that we're offering is the same retainer fee. I changed some of the language because it was old and because over the years I got asked questions, so I tried to put more clarity to it. But I, I guess, I guess I'm not aware of any scope change.
It's just there. It's item number one under, under their service that we would be billed hourly, and it's within your retainer.
It's, I, I guess I'm not.
Are you looking at page one of the amendment?
Well, I'm on page two at the top. It, you know, says, general engineering services, which we built for an hourly rate. Item number one, provide assistance to other city departments on engineering-related matters requested. And in the Focus agreement, it specifically, providing engineering support to other city departments, it's included in the retainer.
There, that's, to me, that's the same thing. Provide, yeah, I don't know.
Yes, in your, in Focus's case, it was in the retainer. In the BM, Bolton and Mink, it's, it's paid for hourly.
They're both in the retainer.
It does say non-retainer on that.
That's not, in, in the, in the, in the Bolton and Mink, it's in general engineering services, where it's not in the retainer, as billed on an hourly basis.
Oh, we put services with other departments that, that aren't being provided, that are talked about a lot. And that's doing individual building certificate reviews, that's doing a lot of things like that. And so those aren't in the retainer because that's, that's a whole nother service that we would have to staff up for if, if that happened. And Focus has not been providing that.
So building and right-of-way permit reviews currently is not done.
Yeah, and right-of-way permit reviews have never been part of that. Those are, those are recouped through a right-of-way fee system. They've never been part of the retainer, so.
They're listed as part in the, in your agreement.
What's that?
They're listed as being in, in the retainer in your agreement, providing engineering support to other city departments.
But it says the same thing, item number one under A, provide engineering assistance on day-to-day matters not related to a specific project or development.
Focus's doesn't limit it to that. It's, it's all-inclusive. At least, that's what the language says. Maybe we haven't been, maybe we haven't been treating it that way, but that's what the language says.
The, the retainer is intended to provide the city engineering services, the general city engineering services budget stuff on a retainer basis. It's not, it's not intended to provide unlimited services to all the other departments of whatever they want.
But reviewing right-of-way permits is a, is a limited service. It's.
Right, and we've.
But under the Bolton and Mink contract, we'd be charged for that.
You were being charged for that under the Focus contract.
I don't see where it's an extra, but it was not a task order. It's, it's under, you know, engineering services. So, well, that's just my opinion at any rate. That's probably.
Yeah.
The intention is not, the intention was to bring you the same retainer. And what, and basically what we've been providing since, well, we, we haven't been providing the retainer since two thousand and eleven, so I won't say since two thousand and eleven. That started in twenty-eighteen, I believe.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion?
I'll just add one thing here. I just, I think Focus had a very elegant solution for engineering services. And so I, I am, although I'm a little sad that we'll, we won't have that anymore because I thought it was a very elegant solution for the city. I, I think it's, it's nice that with the way that they have structured the deal, it sounds like Jack is planning to stick around and help out. Because again, you know, I'm sure that wasn't something that he had to have done. So I do appreciate that, and I appreciate them considering the pooled approach that we took. Again, I, I guess there's a little bit of vagueness to that statement, and I don't know for sure how much the pooled services are going to be brought into it, but I guess I just, I hope that that can kind of continue forward with some of the projects when it would be beneficial for the city to, to go that way, which I guess might not always be most beneficial for the business. So I guess I understand that. But, yeah, I guess just also congratulations. But yeah, I think Focus had a very elegant solution, and I hope Bolton and Mink maybe considers utilizing some of it as well.
Okay, so we have a motion to appoint Mr. Stanley of Bolton and Mink as the official city engineer and principal provider of professional engineering services for twenty-twenty-five and to approve the amendment that Bolton and Mink professional services agreement dated March twentieth. Is that right?
Twenty thirteen?
Twenty thirteen.
I mean, probably. Twenty twenty-three, it's back to twenty thirteen?
Yeah, and then with the added termination of engineering agreement with Focus Engineering immediately. Call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 The poll, same sign. Hearing none. It's approved. Thank you for the discussion.
Mr. Mayor, would you mind if I just took a minute and introduced myself to the council here?
Yes, please do.
Quick, I, I'm sure I would have had the chance before, but Nate Stanley, I've been with Bolton and Mink for a couple of years. I, I actually spent the majority of my career in the public sector as a city engineer and public works director. For the cities, primarily for the city of Hopkins, actually. I was public works director out there before that city engineer for about nine years. I've been doing this for, ooh, twenty-two years now. I'm super excited about Lake Elmo. I, I grew up in Lakeland, went to Oakland Junior High, graduated from Stoward High School. Mom and dad still live out here. This is, you know, kind of like my home area, and, and I'm really, you know, when, when you get a chance to, to give back to the, the area that kind of helped you come up, but it's just, for me, there's nothing better. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Go. Item number twenty-eight, approve professional services agreement with Raf Telus to complete operational assessment of the public works department.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council members. This item was brought back to you from being tabled in December, and the feedback was to bring back a more robust scope of work and outcomes, which have been attached to your packet and also have been discussed with Raf Telus. And I'm confident that they will be able to provide the scope and the outcomes that we're looking for. And following the December meeting, we also had an opportunity, staff had an opportunity to get ahold of a recent public works operational assessment that Raf Telus completed with a different city and was able to contact their reference, and all positive remarks came back from that. Both adding.
Anything questions for the administrator on this item?
So DDA could not produce the SME that was needed, like it?
Correct, yep. They, they more, if we are looking for an administration, finance, operational assessment, they had staff on hand to do that, but the public works department, they did not have a subject matter expert to provide that.
Any other questions?
I guess if you just speak a little bit to, or expand upon, I know it's in the pack a little bit, but expand upon a little bit the concern with Baker Tilly's deliverables versus Raf Telus. Is it, it seems like the decision was based more off of, we feel like, you felt like Raf Telus had a better team that would be able to provide more, better direction, more so than maybe the deliverables that they said they could each provide?
Yeah, correct, correct. The project team at Raf Telus all has the experience, the public works experience. And the primary project manager has experience in public works over twenty years. Where when we met with, when I met with Baker Tilly, the primary project managers do not have that public works experience, as well as they had assigned less hours for the SME Baker Tilly did. So while the cost is lower, it appeared, as well as after seeing their products that they both provided to a client, is that Raf Telus was just more robust and able to provide a better product. So that was why the recommendation is to go with Raf Telus.
So I think in our meeting, when this was previously brought forward, there was a concern that some of the deliverables needed to be flushed out. Do you feel like that's, it looks like it's some more descriptive or more definite, deliverables have been placed, based on the conversation we had previously, correct?
Yeah, yep, we were able to provide the scope of outcomes and deliverables to Raf Telus and meet with them to make sure that we're all on the same page. And also with meeting with Raf Telus, they just reminded us that this is definitely an iterative process where we will be working together and refining what we need as we go forward together to have the best outcome.
Okay. If there aren't any further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second, to approve the hiring of Raf Telus to conduct an operational assessment for the public works department and approve professional services agreement for above services not to exceed fifty-two thousand three hundred and fifty.
Discussion. Councilmember Holtz?
I appreciate that this did go back and that staff had the opportunity to, number one, work with Raf Telus and to clarify some of these things that they obviously put in the work to that. I do appreciate many of the clarifications that are there. They're definitely clear-cut. I mean, obviously, it is the, the hire proposal, but at least based upon what is in there, there's also more to it. And I, is it hire? Yes, but I do think having the SMEs in place needs to happen. I, I would not feel comfortable spending less money for something when you don't have the SMEs in place. I don't think that's an effective use of tax dollars. I would rather do it right the first time, so I, I support this. And it's weird because Baker Tilly's a, a good firm too, like that.
Well, you know, I used to work for them, retired a couple of years.
Well, you know, I used to work for them, retired a couple of years ago. I think Raph Telus is, in this case, Raph Telus proposal is superior. I think in the staff they put on there is superior as well, and I, not a criticism of the staff that Baker Tilly put forward, but they don't have the public works background, because they don't have a lot of focus of public works background on their staff. And so I've spoken especially with the call on this, and I'm very comfortable with the approach we've taken and Raph Telus qualifications, sta-, you know, staffing and the proposals. It's, um, I'd say you can get a lot of proposals to do studies, and you get the study done, and you look, it says, read doesn't tell you what you need to know. Things like the comparable community benchmarking that we talked about and the organizational structure. I think, you know, if you have to, if, if you read through Raph Telus, is there, it wasn't as detailed as, as we felt comfortable with, especially Katrina, and she was right, and, but, you know, by going back and clarifying, is this stuff included? And they said, yes. Now we know we're going to get what we need to make a good decision. And they're a very high quality firm. Baker Tilly's a high quality firm as well. But in this case, the Raph Telus staff that they're going to assign to it, and their scope was just better defined, better quality.
Yeah.
I, I, yeah, I guess I just agree that, you know, yeah, although it is a little bit more, I mean, this could be, if we get a better report and we have to hire three people instead of four based off the report, I mean, it pays for itself with that information. So, yeah, although I would have liked to be able to see us go with the lower one. I think if the, the information we're going to get from it is that much better, I'm comfortable with paying the higher price as well.
I would agree. All right, I'll call a question. All those in favor of approving the hiring of Raph Telus to conduct an operational assessment for the public works department and approve professional services agreement for above services not to exceed fifty-two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved. Moving on to item number twenty-nine, purchase agreement for Olson property, resolution two thousand twenty-five dash zero zero seven.
All right, can we share the screen?
That's a beautiful picture.
Yeah, that looks warm.
That, that's a beach scene, but that's not the map of, uh, Lake Elmo.
We're buying a beach.
Uh, so we want to, uh.
Our own private island.
Yeah.
Do we have to move it? We don't have two screens here. How do I, wait, wait, I have an idea. Okay, you go ahead.
If you hit the Windows P, it'll ask to duplicate or extend.
Extend, go to, go to, instead of extend, these screens duplicate. And then right. Yep. We're good. All right, Mayor, City Council, uh, tonight, we're making what I consider a historic decision for the city of Lake Elmo. It's always been told that we don't plant trees for providing shade for ourselves. We do it to provide shade for grandchildren and great grandchildren. This is one of those decisions, when we look back at other old historic cities that were forward thinking. They set aside properties back in the sixteen, seventeen hundreds and eighteen hundreds, not knowing exactly what they're going to do with them, but knowing that they needed open spaces for quality of life for their citizens instead of developing them over. Before you tonight, our two properties, which if we were to wait ten years to talk about this issue, would have houses on them, and we would not have this opportunity to purchase these. While we may not have a firm concept of exactly what's going to go onto these pieces of property, we know the, the impetus for this started with when the Royal Club slash Tartan Park was developed, and the ball fields, which for decades had been utilized by Lake Elmo citizens and Lake Elmo baseball and other tournaments, went away. The developer of that particular project offered the city a million dollars in order to facilitate replacing those ball fields for the quality of life in the, in the, for the residents of Lake Elmo. We received that payment in like twenty twenty-one, and we've started a process in twenty twenty-three, which I'll start to go over. And just for people at home, the two properties we're looking at are these two right here. And they're in reference, they're just west of downtown, just south of Sunfish Lake Park. So in the fall of twenty twenty-three, the city council decided to investigate the possibility of purchasing land for a pinwheel ball field complex to replace tartan fields. On October twelfth, council gave direction to the staff to seek such property that met the criteria, such as being on Collector Street, close to Water Main, near three-phase power, room for septic, stormwater, plenty of parking and buffeting. And there is a, uh, we had all these different, all these different criteria which we were looking. We weren't exactly sure how much land we wanted as a max, but we knew we want a minimum of, I think, like twenty-five acres or something like that. When the planning staff put together properties which fit those criteria concerning water and collector roads and other informations, you ended up with these kind of big circles of area that within the city were feasibly or conceptually part of this process. We ended up with nine properties when we delineated, delineated it and looked at each individual parcel within these circles, and we sent out letters to these nine property owners, would they be interested in, in selling or partnering with the city to develop a park? Although, we got back three letters of interest. The city staff worked together along with a session with, with enclosed session with council of those three properties. One property was eliminated due to its size and nature, did not fit what we thought we would put for amenities in there. That leaves two properties which are before you today, the Jurick property and the Olson property. These are, the first property that you're going to be looking at and approving is the Olson property. And that is this property here. We will be, um, this property will have thirty-seven acres on it. They'll be splitting off five point one acres and doing just a lot line adjustment, which is an administrative change, in order to attach it to the farm that you see in the picture here on the lower southwest corner of it. That will leave us this lowland area and the rest of this property. The second property is the Jurick property, which is on the east side here, and we will be buying that entire property. When we buy these pieces of property, um, the process here is if council goes, approves this purchase agreement, that will allow staff to start scheduling a closing for the Olson property after the lot line adjustment has been made. And anytime we get surveying and other information back from the Jurick property, after we close on these two properties, we will have to do a comp plan amendment, moving them, a zoning map, zoning map amendment from rural residential to public facilities. We're going to have to create a variance, because in public facilities, our code currently allows only twenty acres for public facilities. Older, it goes way back concerning the city worried about, I think, large state institutions back in the nineties. And then possibly a minor subdivision or plat for dedicated right-of-way. If you see in the lower part of this, this map, the properties do own south of County Road fourteen, and we'll have to remedy that. The road currently runs across that property with a prescriptive use, historic use of a property for public purposes. This is developed and has been in our master park plan system. Back in two thousand eight or nine, they did one, and then this is a brand new one here. This is from two thousand twenty-four. And if you look on page sixty-six, we, we talk about developing a new athletic park to support ball field and softball, competitive and town ball. And then on page sixty-eight, we say, look to provide additional field space in the southeast of part of the city, engaged with neighbors, clubs and organizations to determine the type and size of field, flex lacrosse, football, soccer, et cetera. And then in the park plan on page eighty-eight, where we talk about, uh, resources that would be needed. One of the initiatives to develop a new community athletic park to support baseball and softball, competitive and town ball. And we go through kind of what we're going to be dealing with that, and you can see the price down there of between two and five million dollars. So how is this going to be financed? So first off, we're going to be using the million dollars and the interest which is gained from this particular donation to the city, and we'll be using internal funds that we already have in one of our, in one of the banks, and we'll loan it to ourselves either over a five or a ten-year period. And we'll be paying that back with a small levy increase. Staff have, have considered this. Staff is leaning towards a ten-year payback period. That will come back to council for a rep, for a debate and approval. In order to do that, we would look towards closing and needing to make that decision in early February. We'll be closing hopefully in early February with one and late February with the other property. So that will provide the, you know, around two million dollars, a little less than two million dollars for the initial purchase of these properties. After that, for people at home, we will probably end up having some sort of study group, focus group, uh, concept plans. We've already talked to Bolton and Mink, and they will be able to do concept plans for us for this property, for consideration, not only for you, but also for the citizens to consider. And I would like to see maybe even some sort of survey or interest, what kind of, what do people want to see out on these properties? And we're in no huge rush to do that. I don't see anything happening this year for sure. And next year, twenty twenty-six maybe, but again, we're going to have to line up additional money for that and interest in Focus to decide when and how we're going to deal with that. This property has, has meets the criteria. There's a water main right on the property. It has three-phase power, but we will have to deal with stormwater. It is not in a sewed area, musa area, so we'll have to develop a, a, a septic system in order to facilitate bathrooms and other amenities, which will, will have to size that appropriately for the operation when it's fully built out. So we're going to have to have a pretty good concept of what we're going to put into that property. With that, the, um, I'll take, I'll take questions. And if not, I would see move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-five zero zero seven, approving purchase agreement for the property owned by Fonda Olson.
Any questions for Mr. Schroder? Councilmember Hearn.
Uh, so you mentioned that some of the funding would come from the, the million dollars from the baseball, um, from Tartan Park, but then you also mentioned plus the interest that's been gained on it. That was new to me. I just hadn't heard that. How much interest has been gained on that?
Do you have any idea off the top of your head on that? I don't either. I, I don't think it's a significant amount of money. I mean, it's been there for three years, so my gut guess is probably eighty thousand bucks, maybe.
Okay.
I don't know.
And then, right, ask one more here. So I guess kind of on then, I, I apologize, I didn't ask this sooner, it just kind of came to me tonight. But, um, so if this land was purchased, um, that a million dol-, the million dollars plus whatever interest was put towards the purchase, um, and let's say three years from now, uh, we own the land, the community says, hey, we don't want to actually do anything here, and we decide to sell it, what happens to that million dollars that was originally earmarked for the baseball fields?
Well, that's a good question. That was written into a developers agreement that happened in, um, twenty seventeen. And I have the resolution and the, uh, we got payment on the third phase of it in August of two thousand twenty-one. The links are in the packet. I think this would be a question for legal to decide.
On the fly.
So, yeah, sorry, that.
Does it get divided amongst the council members?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I mean, I suppose the developer or the public could bring an action against the city to compel the city to either keep the property or to take that million dollars and put it into some other property somewhere else in the city for ball fields.
Is that language we can put into the proposal, or the resolution tonight?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I, I don't know what that would be. I mean, it would just, the resolution's just approving the purchase agreement. I mean, one thing you could do is put a restrictive covenant on the property that it only be used for ball fields or, you know, or only used for park purposes, so that, you know, if the future council decides they want to sell it, then, you know, there would have to be some discussion about whether that restrictive covenant could be removed.
Would that be a different discussion, different vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that, oh, that's a discussion point I'll hold off.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think you need to make that decision today. I think if the, for, for whatever reason, the city decided to develop this and sell it, I think the, that council would have to face that decision themselves, along with legal's advice to decide, do we need to replace that money and proactively do that? But I don't think that's a decision for tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Holtz.
You, you had mentioned, obviously, this takes time. There's going to be planning and a very thoughtful process to it. Bolton and Mink as, well, now that Bolton and Mink is our provider, obviously, those services exist. They are not as part of the retainer, correct?
They would not be part of the retainer.
Because it's a new project.
The, the initial discussion, discussion off the top would be somewhere that for ballpark, no pun intended, drawing to put something together might be seven, eight thousand dollars or something to come up with a concept based on what you and the parks commission and whoever you want to put input in on it would be.
Well, I, I mean, we already received emails today from multiple sports leagues that are showing, like, they saw it in the agenda, and they're interested in what that looks like. So I'm just curious, obviously, this is not that the right time for, but what does that look like for those interactions, for those conversations? Is that through staff then first, before we even get to a Bolton Mink to, because that, because that then indicates, you know, ideas to put in the plan?
Yeah, so it'd be my preference if there are organizations with expressed, expressed interest to either help design, help build and fund an operation. I think they should contact staff, and, because we're going to need to know that before we come up with a design. Because if they're like, we want to do this, and all of a sudden we go this way, the design's no good. And we have to see, you know, is there, you know, are these napkin drawings from these people? Is there money behind them? Is there fortitude? You know, we have to sort the wheat from the chaff on community organizations who are interested in this, to being part of our operation here.
Well, and I, I anticipate some of those people might be watching at this point. So it, if this were to pass, when would we be looking to speak with Bolton and Mink about that process? Therefore, those conversations have to occur prior. Are we talking February, March-ish?
So the first step is to close on the property. We don't, we're not going to own the property till most likely March. And so after we have that, then I think we could probably, as staff, we could sit down and figure out, you know, do we have people that have interest in doing this before we start on a design? I think the parks commission would be an integral part of this, saying what did we want to, what did they want to see in here? And I also think the general public. I mean, just because an organization wants to put something in, is that just for a small organization? Or is this for the, we're doing something for the whole city? So we need to take in the advice of the fourteen thousand people that are paying for this. And so I, I don't want to throw. And so I, I don't want to throw cold water on the quickness of this, but I would like to take, we're going to be doing this. We want to do it right. There's an old adage, you know, there's never time to do it right. There's always time to do it over, you know, and we don't want to do it over.
Very true. Thank you.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt resolution number two oh two five dash oh oh seven, approving a purchase agreement for property owned by Fonda Olson.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Just going to lead this by saying, uh, I know that early on, Councilmember Holtz and I had discussed this community, um, park that had been in the comp plan for a long time. And, um, I did get a question from a resident about why are we, um, and it's going to be a question, so I'm just going to address it now. Why are we looking at purchasing this land versus, uh, using the hundred and eighty acres out by Ideal Avenue? I think the communities that grow together and be together, and we've seen a really great instance of that happening with some of the civic events that have happened in the Old Village, whether it's, uh, National Night Out, the volunteers that have put that together, uh, Light Up Lake Elmo in December, or the Kitty Parade that happens on the Fourth of July. We've seen those grow as our cities have grown and, and, and they grow really more rapidly with, with word getting out about how much people have fun at those. And we look around at communities that thrive and they have places for people to gather, um, be together. And I, I see this as an opportunity that's not on the outskirts of Lake Elmo. I think, uh, had been presented at one time when I watched previous council meetings earlier when I lived here. And, and the preference is what I've heard and, and kind of my own opinion is that you want something a little more centrally located to the city, and we have a population, as Met Council provides nearly fourteen thousand five hundred, uh, expected to grow over thirty thousand at some point in time. And really looking at something, I mean, as excited as some people would say to get out there and churn the dirt right away. I think that, um, caution should be had to make sure that you take the appropriate steps, include, include people on something of this size and nature to make sure that, you know, we do get it as right as possible. I mean, as, uh, you know, there's your way, there's my way as to the correct way, the right way, and the only way that doesn't exist. So, um, but taking into account to make it the best that we can, I think is very important. So it's really kind of more of a, a vision. It's not a, it's got to happen, and I'm really hoping the community can get around something like this. I hope that, um, they see this as an opportunity for, um, community events that can happen and, and bring people to see, um, really how special Lake Elmo is and can be. So I'm, I'm, obviously, I'm excited about this. It's been talked about. Um, it doesn't come without a price, that's for sure. Um, but I, I really look to the future, and, um, it's probably not something I'm going to partake in a whole lot with, right? Regards to seeing kids out there enjoying baseball fields, but it's also, we've heard from, uh, the community that open space is a priority. And, uh, if we can create something that's adjoining the wonderful Sunfish Lake Park that's, gets used regularly, and then maybe people will use that a little bit as well. I, I, I don't really see any negatives on this, at least from a community aspect. Um, I guess that's debatable, but that's, that's, that's what I wanted to say. So, um, that's all I'm going to say for both of the properties. I'm in favor of both of these at this point in time. So if there's any other discussion, I'll open it up. Councilmember Dragicich.
I can occur with your, with your comments, Mayor. I think we're building a, uh, something for the future of the community. You, you get this opportunity to buy this land in Central Park of the city for recreational purposes, benefit of our residents, and it's, it's something you have to have a vision for the future. I would look at like Central Park in New York and, you know, and other places where I've been, where they have these very large parks that were built in the thirties, a lot of them were WPA projects, and everyone's enjoying them still today. And so whatever vision our community has for the type of things they'd like to have, softball, soccer, baseball, whatever, we work with them and come up with a plan that will serve us for the next hundred years. It's, it's a very good purchase for the future of this city.
Councilmember Holtz.
Well, and I would say first off, credit to the prior council and to the developer for having that agreement in place, because those funds essentially were the impetus for this. And it, it kind of frustrates me because the impetus should have been the two thousand eight Parks Plan. It should have been the twenty forty Comp Plan. We've had in place documentation supported by countless meetings with the public, with, uh, council throughout that time as to what created those documents. This has been in there for literally a decade and a half, and this is now finally a time where we're able to have this conversation to say we have a chance to act upon it. We know from our own updates to the Parks Plan, as, um, Mr. Schroder mentioned, we are, that, that updated Parks Plan does show that we are short on fields. That, that's not in debate. The issue is how properly to address it. Uh, do you put a field here and a field there and maybe a field there? And, and we, we asked staff to look at that. And it, the majority have decided that it, there wasn't a bang for the buck with that. That maybe it was more appropriate to see what we could do along this side, along this perspective. And I, I plan to vote for, for both of these. And I think one, one way of looking at it, this is the central corridor of recreation. You do have Sunfish Lake to the park. You also have Lake Elmo Park Reserve to the south. And you have a more active, a more, you know, this can be with sport leagues, but also many other things are possible here. So you have diverse types of recreation all in the central part of the city. I, I think the hundred and eighty is definitely a, a future conversation that we're probably going to have as a council as to how best to move forward with that. But I don't, I don't want to see this type of asset on the edge of our community. I prefer to see it in a location like this. And it's, it's not directly adjacent to downtown, but it's pretty dang close. And there, you know, eventually there will be, uh, walkways along County fourteen that are going to be able to allow pedestrian access to this location. Um, I, I just, one of the things that, I mean, we hear feedback about many things, right? Taxes, water, um, random permit issue, various things come up all the time, right? One thing that is consistent over time is access to sport fields. Now, maybe I have a bias because that's the population I hear from. I, I hear from parents. I hear from those who are in sports leagues of literally football, soccer, softball, baseball, of various sports where this could be an asset to, to help them. I think it is inexcusable to not do anything when we have right now seven and eight year olds driving to Stillwater Township to Hugo to, and doing sports there. Literally twenty, thirty, thirty minutes away. It's like, we don't have to have that, and it will only get worse. As the mayor said, we are going to continue to grow. So I, it's the same thing as a phrase with a tree. You do it now because you're planning not only for the future, you're planning for today. This should have happened years ago, but I am done. I support this.
Also a note for the residents, the master park plan that we, uh, have been talking about is on the city's website, if you want to read it.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I'll say a little bit here. Um, I mean, obviously, when you see this at first, the price tag definitely shocks you, um, shocks me. Uh, and that definitely is a concern of this for me, um, the location slightly from the standpoint of, yeah, maybe it's not the flattest land. Um, now, with those concerns, I also look at this from the perspective of, uh, two different things. One, that price tag, if I probably would have looked at the price tag at this property ten years ago, um, I'd be disappointed that we didn't do this ten years ago, and I think I'd probably feel the same ten years from now if I look back and we don't do this. Um, and I guess that's kind of my, my thought process on, with the price tags, well, it's not going to start dropping any lower than this. From the location standpoint, right? You know, we've been asked about the hundred and eighty. Um, would this have, if we could have had, again, ten years ago, uh, picked land that was flat and even closer to, uh, the Old Village, would that have been better? Probably. But again, if we wait ten years, this property here is not going to be available, and then we're going to have to go further away if this is something that we want to do. So those are my two big concerns going into it. But again, I, I look at it, this is like, this does have a lot of great, um, aspects to it as far as the location that have been brought up. One thing that wasn't mentioned was the Greenway Trail that eventually will be, um, running right past this as well, so just for more accessibility. I, I know that there's going to have to be a lot of work that goes into making this feasible because of how hilly and, and not flat it is. But if we don't do it here, I don't know where. And I think we're going to be ten years from now having the same conversation of, shoot, you know, we had, we had that opportunity. And I've heard people say that about other areas in the Old Village as well, um, and I, I don't want to look back and say that. So, um, I, I guess like everyone else has been saying, that's my comments for both of these parcels.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to call the question. All is in favor in adopting resolution twenty twenty five dash zero zero seven, approving a purchase agreement for property owned by Fonda Olson. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next item is similar in that it's purchase agreement for the Jurick property, resolution twenty twenty five dash zero zero eight, as previously described by, uh, Mr. Schroder. Is there anything, uh, different that needs to be said about this? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
There's the map, so.
Move to adopt resolution number twenty twenty five dash zero zero eight, approving a purchase agreement for property owned by Kathleen and Edward Jurick.
Support.
All right, we have a motion in a second. There's been discussions similarly on the first product that pertains Germaine to this, this project as well. If anybody has anything they'd like to see, I'll open it up for discussion. Seeing none, otherwise I will call the question. All those in favor of adopting resolution twenty twenty five dash zero zero eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Purchase agreement for Jurick property is approved. Thank you very much. Council reports. Councilmember Dragicich.
Nothing else to report.
Councilmember Holtz.
Um, I actually forgot to, you know, ask to be put in the record, but I just was going to mention that council on those previous two items did receive emails from, uh, St. Croix Soccer and from Stillwater Softball. Both, uh, board members are Lake Elmo residents and expressed, um, I'll just summarize it, expressed very positive interest on the topic and wanting to partner with the city as to what that looks like. But I just wanted to throw that out there that there are, there are, the groups are watching and, and listening. So I think that is a very positive thing for, as we move forward.
Well, this being the, uh, first meeting of January, or in the first meeting of twenty twenty five, I just want to say, uh, welcome to everybody. I'm, I'm very happy to, uh, go into twenty twenty five with the council and the staff that we have on place and, and the journey that we have in front of us. Next week, we will endeavor on some strategic planning for the city. I'm excited about that and the process that we will go through with, uh, Nicole's leadership in, in doing that, um, process. I'm excited for what the city can do and the residents can do, and this council can represent the, the people, uh, for the next, at least this council, for at least the next two years. That's all I've got to say. Councilmember Hearn.
Yeah, I'll just, I just want to congratulate and thank, um, everybody on the council, um, for, um, for returning, um, and for, for, uh, making the commitment here. Um, I'm really excited as well for the next two years here for sure, um, and to, to see what we can all do. And, um, I, I'm, I, I think it's a very good council, um, and so I'm excited to, to see what can all be done.
Councilmember Kragnis, so this is always at the end, so, uh, you being a new council member, maybe you want to take this opportunity to introduce yourself to the voting public that voted you in and, and, um, typically if we're involved with a commission or something like that, if we attended a meeting, we'll present that information at this time and, uh, give you that opportunity now.
Sure. Yeah, so my name is Nick Kragnis. I, uh, live here, uh, just down in the Old Village. Um, been here for just under a year, so I'm a newer resident to Lake Elmo, but very honored to be in a spot where I can help shape the future of the city. So, um, a little bit of background, I've been a Minnesota resident my whole life, uh, grew up just in the west side of the city, now I'm an east sider. But, uh, um, yeah, I went to Minnesota State Menacato, graduated with our, with my bachelor's in communications, and I'm now a program manager at a large medical device company. So very excited for the opportunity here and, uh, yeah, thank you for having me.
Thank you. Staff reports. I see we have future agenda items. Administrator Miller?
Yeah.
Have anything?
Um, I just want to say thanks to all staff. They've been working really hard to prepare for goal setting next week, and everyone seems really eager and excited, and we'll have, um, a pretty large group, so twenty six people the first night, about twenty one people the second night. So we're all looking forward to it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Johnson?
No report, thank you. No report, thanks.
I just wanted to call out, uh, all the help on this project for buying these properties from Sophia Jensen. She was just an immense help to me in guiding, uh, this property to come to existence, and I just wanted to thank her.
Great. Clarissa, done? Dr. Powers?
Public Works, mayor and council are working hard at tree trimming right now above sidewalks and trails, something we really haven't spent much time on in the past. Uh, we're also doing some RMS four trimming around stormwater pipe ends and third ends and such. Uh, the rink is in really good shape. However, we're continuing to have issues with the lights. So we apologize. They either stay on or they don't come on. Um, we're working almost daily to try and correct that. We've got some help coming in tomorrow, so.
Anybody know a good electrician? Um, yeah, thank you for the tree trimming. Obviously, we're getting some comments from the public on that. We're trying to make sure, the staff is trying to make sure that areas and HOAs are notified when tree trimming is going on. So if you see, uh, City of Lake Elmo Public Works staff out tree, tree trimming, feel free to call your HOA. Uh, if you have questions about what's going on, uh, they do get notified and, and, um, we'll be doing the cleanup after, after that trimming's done. So thank you. Chief?
Just want to say, uh, we wrapped up, uh, twenty twenty four with the busiest year we've ever had, just over eleven hundred calls. We'll be putting together our formal, uh, um, annual report to present to you probably sometime in March. Really appreciate the efforts of staff. It's already been a busy year already. We've had, uh, responded and assisted with Oakdale with forest structure fires in the past week. And then we have seven of our newest hires that are starting a fire academy tonight. So for the next six months, they'll be, uh, putting in, uh, two nights a week, uh, through June on their initial training. So I wish them the best and appreciate the efforts of our staff.
Great, thank you. Jack?
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to say thank you to the council and staff and the community, uh, for all the years of support and, and trust that you've put in me. And, um, it's been a lot of very prideful years of, of helping the community grow and build your infrastructure. I'm not actually going anywhere. I'll still be around, but I'm stepping down from the lead role. Um, I do appreciate Councilmember Hearn's comments on our, our business model. I, I think, um, that's probably my greatest pride of my career was that, that business idea. Unfortunately, it was, it's a complex idea and it doesn't spread easily. Um, it, and, you know, I think there was an aligning of, uh, of the, the community needing more robust services with the growth that's, that's occurred now. Um, so the timing's probably right, uh, to move on. Also, with my age, uh, and we, we had difficulty recruiting, uh, people into that model. And so we probably, you know, I didn't have really a transition plan. So, uh, I'm also proud of, um, what I've accomplished in the last year and bringing forward a plan that I think will be a smooth transition for the city. Um, I found a good landing place for my employees, a good, uh, a good consultant to, to come in and a good way to transition the model. So I, I'm, I'm proud of that as well, but, um, just thank you.
Certainly on the, uh, on behalf of the city, Jack, we do appreciate all that you've done for the city and, and the infrastructure and knowing that it's laid out thoughtfully, um, because that does go a long ways to long-term savings for the city and its residents, um, being mindful of those. being mindful of all those things, taking care of the, the projects that you have overseen and very happy that you'll still be around to help out with some of that, that knowledge transfer and, and very appreciative of all that hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Sarah?
No report.
All right, with that, we'll adjourn, we'll adjourn the meeting for tonight.